Okay, if everybody wants to find a seat. Good evening, welcome back to the Lompoke City Council meeting. And the first thing is a report from closed session. City Attorney?
There are no report of elections.
Okay. Someday we'll have something, to be honest. We did last time, we had a report of election. Okay, and our invocation today, Anita Friedman. Anita, if you'd all please rise and remain standing.
Praise do you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who has created us, sustained us, and enabled us to reach this day. Our God, and God of our ancestors, bless all the inhabitants of our city with your spirit. We ask your blessings for our city's leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Give them insights from your teachings, that they may administer all affairs of government fairly, that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom may abide in our midst. Grant to all those here tonight such wisdom, understanding, and resolve, that they may make the best decisions to lead our city in justice and righteousness. And let us say, amen.
If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just a couple corrections. You know when you have a short meeting and you don't think you're gonna have a lot to do? There were two items that I inadvertently left off the agenda. One is the reading of the 125th Anniversary Proclamation, because we didn't read it at Farmer's Market or Old Town Market the other night, because there was too darn much noise. And also a proclamation for the Lompoke Women's Club. So first, acknowledge that on April 3rd, a certificate of special recognition was mailed to the family of Malcolm and Beverly Anderson in honor of their 50th wedding anniversary on August 31st. So congratulations to them. And then on August 16th, the dedication of the City of Lompoke Pocket Park was held with a special recognition plaque thanking the generous donations of the land by the Negus and Henning families. So something long ago was created. And, kind of fun, we had a presentation of a certificate of special recognition to Jan Martinez for her voluntary service and dedication in overseeing the development of the Pocket Park and so many other vacant lots in town. And if you all know Jan, she hates to be recognized. So we had a great deal of fun with her and we actually got a short speech out of her. And then we had the presentation of our 125th anniversary, which I will read in a moment, and the free cake. If you guys missed it, sorry. It'll be another 25 years before we have free cake again. So, this evening, it will be my pleasure to present two, a proclamation and an acknowledgement, and then I'll go for the long one. So, the folks from the Lompoke Women's Club, come on down. Now, if you get right over here, the camera's gonna catch ya. You can't hide out. So, a proclamation commending the Lompoke Community Women's Club. Whereas, the Lompoke Community Women's Club was established in 1947 for the community betterment, to provide cultural programs and opportunities for women in Lompoke. And whereas, the club meets once a month at the Elks for Lunch from September through May. And the club presently is made up of 32 dedicated, hard-working members. And whereas, the club holds bunkos at the Half Century Club twice a year and participates in the craft show put on by the Boys and Girls Club to raise funds to donate to various philanthropic community organizations to assist them in their invaluable services they provide to our community. And whereas, the club also donates Easter baskets to the convalescent care center and Valentine's Day cakes to the Los Prietos Boys Camp annually, and uses their dues money to pay for gas for the delivery costs. And whereas, and I want you to listen to the list, the club has made charitable contributions to a wide variety of groups by generously donating annually to the following organizations: The Community Kitchen, Family Services, Community Partners in Caring, Lompoke Valley Haven, North County Rape Crisis, VOF Half Century Cub, Lompoke Museum, Friends of the Library, Los Prietos Boys Camp, Cabrillo Madrigals, Sir Optimus for the Bazaar, Catholic Charities Food Pantry, Child Protection Hotline, Boys and Girls Club, the Hospital Foundation, Toys for Tots, Meals on Wheels, Volunteers for Ranger Valley Animals, and the Bethany Lussman Church. Not a short list. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby recognize and commend the Lompoke Community Women's Club for their decades of altruistic dedication, hard work, and gracious support to our community humanitarian organizations to help promote opportunities and provide the means for the betterment of our community.
Thank you.
All right, who's giving the speech?
Oh.
Come on, step right up, say a few words.
Thank you. I'm Phyllis, the president at the present time. And I thank Dirk for bringing this to our attention. We've worked long and hard and it's just the first time we've ever been honored and we feel so humble. Thank you, one and all. Thank you.
You know, Marilyn, I just have to say that those women have been hiding in Lompoke for 50 years and I'd never found them until one afternoon I went and spoke to them. And that's what brought this all on, everything they did.
You can hide, but only for 50 years. And now, some folks from the Lompoke Kennel Club. Yes? Pete, come on. Did you bring anybody with you?
Just me.
Just you? We scared the rest of them away, didn't we?
No, I was just talking to them.
A certificate of appreciation presented to the Lompoke Kennel Club, and event organizer Pete DeSoto. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Lompoke, California, it is with great pleasure that I present to you the certificate of appreciation for your hard work and dedication as a volunteer in organizing and facilitating the annual dog show, year after year. You're the only guy I know that can say, "I helped the town go to the dogs." Our community is-
You're doing a good job.
Our community is privileged to have such a wonderful event that has showcased our wonderful city and has brought tourism, interest, and many great economic opportunities to local businesses. We sincerely thank you and recognize you and your organization for your efforts to enhance our citizens' quality of life with special prestige entertainment that all can enjoy, while also adding great value to our community overall. And this is really, really a small token for all the years that you have done this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I was surprised when I was invited. I was gonna, I thought you guys were gonna chew me out. But, thank you very much. I'm sure all of our members appreciate this. Now, what can I say to you guys? I brought some props, hoping that you could, you could look at these. If you can get some idea of how the show is appreciated, all over the country. If you look at the highlighted area, it's by an Australian judge, unsolicited. But I was surprised to see it in there. Yeah, why don't you read it?
Okay. This is Dog News, the Digest of American Dogs. And this is an article about foreign judges. Heard the usual great reports about how well the DeSotos and the indomitable Dorothy, yeah, I can't pronounce her last name, Ingamals contributed to the running of this top-notch show, talking about the show here. It's certainly strange to think about how perseverance and devotion pay off in life. Think back 10 or 15 years ago to the days that Santa Barbara ruled so supreme, as did other shows aligned with the old Santa Barbara. Though through thick and thin, those who believe in Lompoke and its importance and value to the sport prevailed. This is a great story which should be recorded in dogdom history as a club which despite the odds, defied the expected, and not only won out as the sole and great survivor of a weekend steeped in tradition, but as the club which never stepped on the toes of its neighbors. It just fought the decent fight. My hat is off to those people and I promise to check the whelping calendar in the future, if a bitch comes in season here or around their show date, so that I don't want to miss this show next year, too. I think you've got a pretty good acclaim.
Not bad.
Uh-oh. He comes prepared.
Again, Dog News is a large publication. And Lompoke is well represented. You can pass that around. The tagged areas are pictures of dogs here. This is a copy of our first catalog, our first show. It was September 7, 1974. And I wanted to point out, here on the advertisers. There are 21 advertisers at our first show. Last month, at our July show, we contacted maybe 60 or 70 local businesses and we had six advertisers. But the thing I want to point out is Home Doll is represented in this, too.
Dwayne, you went to the dogs back in '74.
And then, this year is just pictures of the winning dogs at the show. And you can pass that around. And then, this last month, this picture appeared in Dog News. And again, that's Lompoke.
Yeah.
And these catalogs go everywhere, international and around the world. England, the last judge, four judges we had here this last month. One was from Denmark, one was Australia, one from Mexico City, and one from Finland. So their international judges are pretty well represented. But that's all I got.
Well, I think you're doing good, Pete. And we thank you very much for all of your efforts over the years.
Well, thanks again. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we were talking earlier that Pete and I went to school together, put this program together, had people, like you said, all over the world. And it's the first time in the 50-some years that the City of Lompoke recognized the dog show for what they brought to town. In a four-day weekend, it brings more people, the town and every hotel room was full. Gas stations say that's the biggest moneymaker they have is the weekend of the dog show, filling those trucks up. So I'm glad to have Pete here and we want to work with him. Like I said, we did advertise several first years when I had the Pete store.
So, the proclamation I'm about to read, we need to thank Laura Miranda and a whole bunch of city staff members who scurried around and dug through history in my top-left desk drawer where I had been collecting tidbits. So, proclamation congratulating the City of Lompoke on its 125th anniversary incorporated August 13, 1888. Remember that the town was founded in 1874 and we became the city in 1888. And if any of you would like a copy, there's some in the lobby. Whereas, it is my honor and privilege to proclaim and congratulate the City of Lompoke, 125th anniversary incorporated as a city on August 13, 1888, which was originally found as a town in 1874, with a fire department created in 1875. Whereas, in 1888, dogs and businesses were the only required license. The first ordinance was to appoint boards of officers and the second ordinance was to set the time and place for meetings. And the third ordinance was to establish the official city seal. And whereas, also in 1888, the town attorney, town recorder were appointed. The assessment of town taxes was approved and an ordinance was established to prohibit disturbing the peace and disorderly conduct. And late that year, on October 4, 1888, ordinance number 16 established the fire district limits. And whereas, in 1889, water rates were established and the annual election of officers along with sitting officer salaries were provided. In 1890, remember, we were a temperance colony, liquor licenses required, and the town jail was established. In 1891, the grading of H Street was ordered and in 1892, the telephone franchise was granted. In 1893, the grading of Ocean Avenue was ordered and a dog pound was established. In 1889, I'm sorry, 1898, a bicycle ordinance was established. And in 1908, an independent electric company was formed, which eventually became the city, became the City of Lompoke in 1920. In 1916, the first wastewater plant was built. And whereas, in 1940, the first residential, commercial, and industrial zones were established. In 1945, the Recreation Commission was formed and a building code was adopted. In 1952, a new city pool was built. And in 1963, the water plant was built. In 1969, the current library was opened, replacing the Carnegie Library, which then became the Lompoke Museum. And in 1979, this city hall was completed. In 1968, Lompoke joined the Northern California Power Agency for our electric source. And in 1971, the Beautification and Appearance Commission was established. In 1974, the Commission on Aging was established. And in 1975, the Youth Commission was established. Whereas, in 1978, Fire Station 1 was rebuilt. And in 1986, Fire Station 2 was built. In 1987, the new police station was completed on top of the existing jail that we established back in 1888. And in 2004, the city Wi-Fi system was implemented. In 2006, our new aquatic center was built. In 1993, the city council donated the land for the Allen Hancock College Lompoke Community Campus and subsequently adjacent land in 2008 for the almost-completed Public Safety Training Center. Now therefore, ah, that part we don't need. So, we have a rich history of going from a temperance colony to a thriving city. And we had a lot of fun with the proclamation. I hope you've enjoyed it. Thank you. Okay, City Administrator Status Report. I did presentations.
The next item-
Oh, I missed one.
...in your code enforcement.
Yep, sure did. Okay, one more presentation. Senior Code Enforcement Officer Steve Boggs, an update on the city's nuisance code enforcement program. Sorry, Steve. Thought you lucked out, huh?
Thought I did. Honorable Mayor and Council, good evening. I'm Steve Boggs, Senior Code Enforcement Officer for the City of Lompoke. You have before you an update of the City of Lompoke Code Enforcement Program. The update contains a brief background pertaining to ordinance 1584-12. This ordinance has allowed for the issuance of an administrative citation when voluntary compliance to correct property nuisance conditions as defined in Lompoke Municipal Code Chapter 17.140.010 cannot be obtained. This update before you includes not only property nuisance code enforcement case totals, but also includes cases relating to substandard housing, construction work performed without permits, assorted zoning violations, such as accessory structures, roosters and chickens, barking dogs, and many other concerns the residents in our community submit to us for correction. As you can see, there's been an increase in the number of cases that have been opened, as well as an increase in the number of cases resolved from the 2011, 2012, and the 2012, 2013 reporting period. It's now easier for our residents to report property nuisance conditions that are clearly visible from the public right-of-way. This is a result of the actions taken by council in adopting ordinance 1584-12. Residents can call and report property nuisance conditions, email information, or come into City Hall and report their concerns. In instances of substandard housing and building code violations not clearly visible from the public way, a written complaint signed by the complainant is still required. Although the results reported to you this evening are significant, there is more work that must be done as we strive to make our community the best it can be for our residents and visitors to our city. Staff remains committed to the task at hand in working with our residents, council, city departments, and supporting agencies as we continue to move forward in our efforts. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? Councilor Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I want to thank you for the job you do. Other than being on the council, you probably are the person that is hated the most by some citizens and you don't really get the recognition from us that you really deserve. So I want to thank you for the job you do. I'm just wondering, and I don't know if this would take a request on my part, a council request, but on page 2 of 4, under reporting nuisances, I'm looking at the second paragraph, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th line, where it says, well, actually, the 5th line. Failure to contact code enforcement may make progress correcting the violation or comply with the time request. It says, "may result in a warning administrative citation." And I know we approved this letter, but I'm wondering what it would take to have that instead of "may," "will" result in a warning citation. And then, the following sentence says, "Failure to correct the violation can result in a fine." Again, I don't know what it'll take, if I need to make the motion to bring this back. "Will result in a fine." Because that's really what we're trying to get across. Either they correct the deficiency, or they get fined. I mean, here we're giving, I don't know whose option it is. Do you, is that your choice, whether a fine gets put out? Or where does it go, at that point? Because it says "may" instead of "will."
Yes. There's just different circumstances that you run across in the course of a code enforcement action. And, you know, sometimes you're dealing with instances where people are physically unable to correct their violations in a timely manner. Sometimes you run across instances where, you know, there's been cases of mental illness. Many times what I'll do is I'll consult with the city attorney and discuss a case. And we may communicate with that individual, provide them with a letter. And so, it doesn't always result in a fine.
Well, and I, but if they don't correct the issue-
Right.
Okay. It says, I mean, the first sentence, it says, "it may result in a warning." And in the warning, it says, with a date, a future date set. So that future date could be a month from now, two months from now, depending on what you decide their abilities are to correct it. I mean, it may not be tomorrow, it may be a month from now. But it seems like if we really want to become proactive on this, we should say, "a warning letter will be sent, and if they don't correct it, a fine will be imposed." This is my opinion. Now, City Attorney, do I, if I want this, do I bring this back as a council request, to bring it back as an agenda item?
If I may, through the mayor, you certainly could bring it back. My suggestion would be, however, there are many circumstances where you don't want to have a hard, fast rule because the process that's followed is to try to gain the public's acceptance and understanding and willingness to do the work. And sometimes, half the work is done, or three-quarters of the work is done. But you also want to be careful on stepping into an area that's really a prosecutorial discretion and the code enforcement officer should be able to exercise that discretion in a particular moment as he thinks is best to serve the purpose of the entire project or the program.
Okay, I'll think on this for a little bit. And Steve, I really appreciate the job you're doing. It's just, I still drive around town, and I know you do, too. And you see so many violations. I mean, right now, I bet I could go out within a square block of here and find some grass that is 18 inches tall, weeds that are 18 inches tall, probably maybe a boarded-up window. There's still just so many violations. And I don't know what it's going to take for us to get our, most, the majority of the community wants this to happen, they really do. So the one or two people that we may be putting hardship on because we fine them, that is, I really believe that's a minority of people here. So I will put a little thought into it and I may be bringing it back then. But I'll talk to you personally about it. I mean, how we can become really more proactive on this thing. But anyway, I want to thank you for your time. I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Steve, thinking back over 2012, how many cases would you say that you, not the ones that we refer to the city attorney because they blatantly just weren't cooperative, but how many cases would you think you have open now where you're still trying to get something corrected from back in 2012 because there's some hardship? I mean, a couple, a couple, 10, 12, what do you think it is? And not a specific number.
Are you talking about a specific type of case? Are you talking about-
Nuisance code enforcement, where you had an issue back then and because the person had some problem, you're still trying to get compliance. And it's not something where they basically said, "No, go pound sand," which therefore went to the city attorney, but you're still working with them to try to get some compliance from last year.
I can think of a couple. And it'd be instances where individuals have had hardship conditions and they presented, you know, written requests for an extension of time. And then, you know, they've been given, they've been granted those extensions. I can think of one or two, you know, in that category.
So it's not a substantial number. There are just a few people who need a little more hand-holding.
When you're talking about a duration of that long?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's just a couple that I'm aware of.
And they probably have made some portion of the correction, but they haven't finished it.
Right. They would have to demonstrate some progress-
So they're working on it.
-in coming into compliance.
So I think that's the point, Bob, you know, that we, we have a, and I'm going to ask the city attorney a question, then I'll come to you guys. We don't have a lot of people who aren't cooperative if they want to be. And we're working with them if they want to be cooperative. And then, city attorney in a general sense, how many cases do you have going forward from last year where they weren't cooperative and the bigger stick is now being used?
None really that rose out of this program because we have the fine program. So as it got less cooperative, we issued the administrative fines.
And then they got more cooperative?
Mostly.
Mostly. One property comes to mind that I know we're still struggling with. So, okay, thanks. Didn't you have your light on, Ashley?
Yeah, I just said, Steve's been doing a good job. And we've been talking about some different properties. And one, we got closer where I live. And how he's working with that family and there's issues within the family. They get it cleaned up. And what I see around town, but looking at the documentation where- And what I see around town, but looking at the documentation where we wound up, 154, 161 out of 588 cases, we're doing some good compared to it, but the problem is that you look at 588, if it was that bad, we were in a real good place to, we are now in a good place. One of the things was, I'm real happy with, because when I was on the council before, you had the planning department, and then you had the fire department, were the two agencies at that time going out. One had to do on land, one had to do outside. Now it's all under you, and that's made it go a lot simpler. So there's only one person involved instead of two different agencies. And I think you're doing a real good job. Like, we had one on 8th Street, went down and talked to the gentleman, goes down there, and they clean the thing up within 48 hours. So the people do want to work, but they got to be noticed so they can.
Everybody needs a little reminder. Councilmember Costa.
I would just say to you that much of the successes that we've enjoyed to this point as we developed this program has been the response of our residents to the, when they're informed of the violations that they have, and it's been their response. I've also worked closely, you know, with the planning division, the building division, the fire department, the police department, wastewater. So there's many people that have been involved, so the success that we're enjoying has a lot to do with their efforts as well, as well as, of course, yourselves for granting the authority to move forward, and city administration. So, you know, it's not all me. It's the people that I have the privilege to work with, so.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your presentation. I'm glad the city, excuse me, the city attorney stated what he stated. My concern with Councilmember Lingle's suggestion is that loss of discretion that I think should be built into the position. I mean, the administrative fine in general, you know, officially I was opposed and still am, but I have to admit, 12 citations with fines out of 585, you know, 2% isn't bad for me. I don't think that there was any abuse that took place. That said, I want to see this again in another 12-month period, and I just want to track these things. I do have two questions. My first question is, of those 12 citations with fines, was that 12 separate cases, or is that 12 separate citations perhaps with multiple, or with less than 12 properties?
Yes, it would be less than 12 properties because we've had individuals that received a fine and then received an additional citation because they did not comply.
And what was the total fines paid during that period?
I believe the total paid was about $125.
Okay. And then the other question that I have is the page one of two of the photos. The third photo is a before and after, but I don't really know what I'm looking at because it doesn't look like it's from the same angle. It's a photo of a fence.
You're talking about the third, the third one there?
Yes.
Yes. What you have there is you have fencing that was located in the public right-of-way, and that's on a corner abutting an alley, and so what you have is a dangerous condition there, somebody pulling out of that alley, their visibility would be affected. Hats off to the property owner. They did the right thing. They relocated their fencing, installed it properly out of the public right-of-way. They voluntarily complied and took care of that.
And what about the paving? Because it looks like it was paved underneath where it was originally a corner as opposed to that setback now.
Okay, you're saying what about the paving, or?
Was that pre-existing? This, on the right-hand side, this is the after photo, right? Is that what you're meaning?
Yeah, was that pre-existing? To be honest with you, I don't recall.
Because I don't, this photo, well, you can't really even tell in here, but this photo on the left is not the same angle as the one on the right. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is not from the same angle.
Okay, but you were just showing that was perhaps another corner of the fence, just to show.
It was from another angle, but it was showing, you know, that fence in that location.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, Mr. Boggs, just a couple here. I'm looking at the very back page, the code enforcement activity. This is all the proactive cases here, right?
No, no, that is not all proactive. That's, that includes, that includes cases of substandard housing, construction without permits.
Now, how do we get into that? That's also then part of the proactive?
Well, no, it's driven by complaints.
Yeah, that requires a complaint if we're talking about substandard housing.
So the total number then increased, when that is complaint and proactive?
Yes, yes. Because this is, this report encompasses.
Okay, it just called out administrative citations here, and I didn't know if we were covering all of them then. There was a couple, two other things. I know this is a presentation, so I don't want to get into the grass with it here, but what are the most common violations that you're seeing?
The most common violations?
Top three.
I would say we're seeing, of course, property nuisance conditions, and we see a lot of vehicles that are inoperative, you know, maybe up on jack stands, parked on the front lawn. Of course, recently, we've taken action, and we're getting pretty quick results now when we go out and observe those conditions. With the summer, there was a big concern in regards to overgrown weeds and grass with the new fireworks, where people can have fireworks. We really didn't want to see a condition where we could have some fires perhaps. We were seeing a lot of overgrowth, you know, weeds and grass over a foot in height.
So you've got overgrowth, inoperative vehicles.
Yeah, those are two that are very common. We're seeing, you know, a fair amount of conditions that are, you know, a lot of materials stored in people's front yards that are clearly visible from the public right-of-way. We're seeing less because people are responding well, but we do see that as well.
And most of these are cleaned up then when you issue the citation?
Well, if they're cleaned up, I don't issue a citation.
Oh, I understand. You've issued the law. I guess for the ability to say, what is the process? You come to my house, you can barely see it because of the weeds, I've got a car blocking your way up the, you know, it's on jack stands, and I got a big pile of junk. What happens to me now? What do you do? What is the process so that everybody kind of has an idea?
Okay, so what you're defining, those are clearly property nuisance conditions as defined in chapter 17 of the Lompoc Municipal Code. Clearly visible from the public street, from the public sidewalk, adjoining properties as well. So those are the types of things we're trying to address. We either receive a complaint, you know, somebody calls, email, written complaint, or if I'm in the neighborhood and I observe that, what I do is I stop, observe the conditions from the public right-of-way, I'll take photos to document the site conditions. So from the public street, you can tell exactly what we're looking at here. From there, we have a courtesy notice, and it's a courtesy door hanger, and we list the violations. And what I put on that is because our code enforcement program, what the goal has been is to obtain voluntary compliance. And so there will be a note, "Please contact me regarding," and then we'll list those violations that are clearly visible from the public right-of-way. Now, that's followed up on the same day, the next day, depending on how the schedule is. It'll follow up with the approved friendly letter from the mayor, and it informs them again of those violations. That comes in the mail and instructs them to contact code enforcement regarding that violation. And so from there, we've had a pretty good response with people responding to that. And in many cases, you know, people are addressing that issue simply from the courtesy door hanger and the follow-up letter. Then we do a follow-up site visit, and in many instances, we'll see partial compliance. Now, with the partial compliance, clearly they're illustrating their intent to voluntary comply, voluntarily comply with our nuisance ordinance. And so that being done, take additional photos, document the additional progress that's been made, and monitor the site conditions. Typically, we'll call them, say, "Hey, how are you doing with this?" Knock on the door, speak with them. You know, we've been getting a pretty good response. Typically, if I can speak to the individual, they understand. They understand what needs to be done. They'll ask questions, we'll address that, and that's how that happens. If we don't get any response, if we don't get return phone calls, you know, if we knock, nobody answers the door, leave business cards, you know, then we'll issue a warning citation. And the warning citation has been a good tool. You know, it lets people know, hey, you need to get this taken care of. If they don't respond to that, and I would say to you too, that once they've received a warning citation, if they begin compliance, and in, there's several instances where we have people that are having difficulty, whether it's financial, physical, whatever, we'll ask them to provide a request for an extension in writing, and many people do that, and they say, "Can we have, you know, 30 days to finish and come into compliance?" And we do grant that. You know, we discuss with the city attorney how to proceed, how to move forward initially, and we have that discretion, and that falls within what we're trying to achieve is the voluntary compliance. And so, you know, that's kind of an overview. Typically, if you've received a citation with a fine, you know, we've made several efforts.
You're pretty involved in the process at this point, if you get that.
We've been involved in the process.
I meant the person that got the citation. I just, I guess the last thing that I, what other tools can the council give you to make your job easier other than a new truck or something?
I'm very happy with the vehicle that I have.
That's good.
The city vehicle works very well. What I would say is, I think it's very wise the way that this program has been initiated because what you have is a community that's being introduced into code enforcement. And so the steps that we've taken, we're getting some positive effects. But I would say to you that there's many conditions in our community. You know, obviously, there's more than simply property nuisance conditions. There's more than building code violations. We've heard from people in the community regarding signage. I receive comments from people regarding garage sales, garage sale signage. Now, my authority in terms of the administrative citation, you know, it is limited. It's limited where I can apply that. What I would say is, as the program progresses and you see, you know, the success and we get the procedure really the way that council wants it, once it's completely dialed in, I would think that you would begin to expand. And, you know, with the same, I think, methodology, I don't think we want to go in and fine people for garage sale signage, you know, right off, but we want to introduce a program so that we can, you know, address these issues, the small issues, the large issues, you know, parking of RVs, you know, in people's lawns and everything. We're addressing those issues. There's many of them. We haven't addressed them all, but I think that in the community, word is beginning to get out, and I think we've been fair. I think we've tried to be thorough, and I think we're beginning to get some good results. So, but to tell you, I think that you may want to consider the issues that really concern the community, what you're hearing about from the people that come to you and speak, you may consider expanding the administrative citation so that we have that tool.
Well, it's a thankless job, but it's still one of the top council priorities, so thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just wanted to clarify, when you observe a code violation, you said from the public right-of-way, so that can be the street, that can be the sidewalk?
Yes.
And that can also be that little special area you and I talked about? And can you just go into that a little bit? There is, and I think we might have even spoken briefly, the, there is a space from the sidewalk to the front door that's generally accepted?
Yes, that's the curtilage.
Curtilage. I couldn't recall the word.
Yes, and that's from, right, and so in the normal course of business, let's say the, your mailman, where would he go? He would walk from the sidewalk, perhaps along your driveway, right up to your, to your front door. And so, you know, what's observed there? That's, you know, that's open to the public.
Right, so I want the public to be aware that, you know, that some of the pushback that I've received is that they felt that there was some sort of trespassing involved, but as long as you're in this space, that's the curtilage, you're legally allowed to observe from that space?
That is correct.
Okay, I would just say tread lightly.
I understand, and I respect that. The actions that we take, we do, we respect people's rights and conduct, in the course of my job, I conduct myself in a manner that I expect to be questioned, and I expect to be able to give answers.
Well, Steve, all the people that you went out and got after said you were polite, friendly, helped them with ideas, so even though they didn't like what you were doing, they liked the way you did it. So I think that's the best you can hope for.
Thank you.
I personally am very sad, on the last page, the van on the left, I've driven by that location for at least eight years and seen that van there, and I noticed it was gone the other day, and I was kind of sad. It's kind of like losing a landmark.
Thank you.
But I think it was important that we moved it before it completely rusted away, because I'm sure it's been there at least 15 years.
I bought it and put it in front of your house.
I don't live there anymore. Okay, thank you, Steve. Appreciate your good work, and keep it up.
Thank you.
Okay, now, moving on to what I've heard, city administrators' status report, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and community audience, thank you for this opportunity to report the status of a few city engineering projects. The construction work on the library re-roofing project began this week and is now underway. Yay! And as well, the construction work to install the traffic signal at Orange Ocean Avenue is underway. And the Olive Avenue storm repair is significantly completed, and you'll see that before you soon. And the city project to install pavers in the 100 block of West North 8th Street is nearing design completion and moving forward with the bid process. That's all I have to report tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Larry's not here. I think we should commend him on having a project that didn't take 19 years. How long was that storm washout, four years ago? So it was shorter than the bicycle paths to Hancock College. Any staff requests or announcements, city clerk? Okay. Oral communications, this is your opportunity to talk to us about anything if the item is on the agenda tonight, and you can wait, that's better, and if it's not, come on down.
Good evening. My name is Cecilia Martner, and I am a Lompoc resident. I'm here before you tonight as the president of the Board of Directors of the Lompoc Theater Project, and we, we, please, I am trying to gather a few of our board members as well as founding members, and we are here before you tonight to reassure you that we're very eager to work with the city and the community at large to restore the Lompoc Theater. We want to restore the Lompoc Theater for a venue, performing arts, educational opportunities, and perhaps more importantly, entertainment. And we do want entertainment in our town, and particularly, we are very aware, as you're very aware, that it's really vital to the Lompoc revitalization of downtown. As you may be aware, we have met with your city staff, city administrator, and your legal counsel, and we are discussing the term sheet, which I am sure you must be aware of by now, and we're just eager to get some feedback from you, and as I said before, we are looking forward to work with you and come to an agreement in which we can move forward to restore this theater sooner rather than later. So thank you very much for your attention, and I don't know if there is any other board members that would like or to say a few words. So thank you very much, and I hope that we can hear from you soon. Any questions or?
And we're on the verge of submitting to the Oversight Board to go to the state so that maybe we can unwind this, because we jumped through all their other hoops, and we're now allowed to turn in our property management plan. So, you know, before we're all old and gray, we're going to get there.
Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to work with the city and, of course, the community at large, and our Board of Directors is very eager to get going. So thank you.
Good, good. Good, good.
Thank you, I would just ask that you come back and give us updates, whenever, you know, if there's events, or fundraisers, or if you'll be at Old Town Market, I didn't know you'd actually be there, things like that, please feel free to come and let us know.
Oh, absolutely, and I think we plan to do that, and we do, you know, we're, we're getting together, we have a board of directors, we're meeting, we are identifying volunteers, we're identifying basically director's positions, publicity directors, so I'm sure our publicity director will be very much in touch with the city, and, and with the community at large, to, to let us know that we're here. And, and I think we do have the common goal, which is to restore the theater for something that is very much needed in downtown. So, we, we need your help, certainly, and we certainly need the help of the community as well. So, thank you.
Good things. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak at this time?
Pam Wall, local resident, I just have a few quick things. About a year ago, it was proposed that we do a low-income housing workshop, and I believe councilmember Costa and Mary Lynn were going to participate in that, and that hasn't happened yet, so I wonder if that can get scheduled. The other thing is, we've joined as a heel city about a year ago, and I wonder if we could get an update on that, and where we are. In particular, address the issue of empty city lots owned by the city, that possibly could be used for community gardens, and the healthy eating part of that. That, I'd really appreciate that, there's people that would, are interested in doing that. The last thing is about the water rates. That's already said and done, it's unfortunate that we didn't go with a little lighter sentence on the community, but given that's already done, perhaps we could have some workshops for how to save, conserve on water usage, to help the people keep their bills down, they're going up, as you know, considerably. I did pull something from Sacramento, it's being put on by their water conservation office tomorrow, and it's, it's called Water Smart Gardening Workshop, but it includes some other things. Things like this might be helpful. I still take a family to the community garden on college, and our, our lot rate just doubled, and it's basically the water rate, and that increase hasn't gone into effect yet. I'm not a gardener, so I could appreciate, you know, a workshop, and some help, probably other people in this town can too. So it's just a suggestion that maybe we could do something like that to help the community. My big concern is when that safety complex opens, or we're trying to bring new business into town, what they're going to see. I've driven around, and the brown lawns are everywhere already, and that's only going to increase as people can't afford the water. So, just some thoughts. Anyway, I'll pass, I'll give this, there's a copy for the administrator and each of you, or the city clerk, whoever needs that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have a nonprofit that would be interested in the community garden project, we'd be delighted to-
You know, I'm not sure how that can come under, you know, what that would fall under. I know that councilmember Costa is now the director of Lompoc Healthy Coalition, and it seems like this falls into that too, of healthy living in Lompoc. I don't know, I don't know of a nonprofit, I don't know if this would fall under the, that, that group that you started, Mary Lynn, that-
A committee could be formed under there for the purpose. The council already, in our work plan last December, agreed that there's one property in particular that we know is not going anywhere real soon.
On T Street?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm thinking of that.
We've already agreed, we want to do that, but frankly, I haven't had the time to go chase down somebody that wants to put it together, so if you can take that upon yourself and find a nonprofit group that would be interested, or if you want to get a group together and form a committee under the foundation, I mean, it wouldn't be up to the board, but they usually take all, everybody that wants to do something.
Well, I've talked to a few people, you know, I just want to know if that's possible.
Yeah, it is, and the council-
And how that would, how that would work, I don't know about, you know?
It would, it would be an agreement with the nonprofit to manage and operate it, just like the BMX park, or any, the theater, any of these things.
But that's done under your foundation, isn't it? Or did they form their own nonprofit?
We, the, the foundation is, and it's not mine, I just helped start it, I don't even belong anymore, but it's, it's an umbrella, and then each project has its own committee with 10 members that runs the project.
So it could come under that without a separate nonprofit?
I think that it could be under the foundation, but you would need to talk to the, to Jim Mosby, the chairman, who's sitting over there on the-
Well, I have talked to Jim. He promised to bring out his bulldozer and stuff to help.
So, give him a, give him a call.
Okay.
And the, the low-income workshop is also on our to-do list from, for the two-year period, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So, we're not forgetting it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll, oop, there we go, one more, come on down. Thank you for your patience.
I, I brought my folder.
All right.
This has been a big topic that was, been coming up. I don't have a card.
You can just say your name.
Karen Applehorn. I'm sorry, it's Karen Applehorn. I've been up here before, but I was pretty angry the last time I was here, because of the subject matter, and it had to do with the code enforcement activity. First of all, I don't know if you noted, but there are errors on the report, such as the dates on the bottom of the administrative issue, citations issued, and this is kind of confusing, these numbers, how many carryover cases were there? And I noticed going over this over the, over the months, that hiring this law firm in LA, first of all, let me say, there was a major fire code problem on our street, and when it was brought to the attention of the city, Mr. Boggs came out to our, we have a double court, and he came out, he didn't just look at that, which he could have driven by and seen it, he went to every single house, there are 18 houses in our development, everybody got a door hanger, everybody got a door hanger, not appreciating the fact that we're living now a 32-year development, and I brought this up before, we have those new trash cans, we were given less than five feet of space on, in our properties where those trash cans would go, and I asked the city to grandmother in, and, and this has to be done because American Civil Disabilities Act 2, grandmother in, that these old trash cans on our properties, that we're allowed to park them out front, if that's the only place we have to park them. And I wrote a specific letter to the city, never got that back, but I was literally harassed or bothered every single week about, oh, you had a cardboard box that could, could not be seen from the public right of way, couldn't be seen from the sidewalk, he had to walk up to my front door to see it. Then I was harassed about not having paid the, the tags on, on a car, that's been my family's collectible car since 1969, the day it was new, and I'm allowed to keep, by the State of California, Lompoc Police Department, that tag was legal, it was parked on cement, it was not illegally parked, it was not growing on grass, oh, he mentioned, there's spiderwebs on it. Well, there are trees over my property, and I think maybe a lot of people know, the spiders just constantly come down, that's a 24-hour task, getting rid of spiderwebs. But I was harassed by the city, got an administrative letter to come into administrative hearing, saying that, well, your car's inoperable, I didn't, the car's not inoperable, I reported it as an op, I wasn't going to drive it onto the street, because I don't want to pay the extra insurance right now, it's not illegal for me to do that, it shouldn't be illegal, you, you don't have the right to tell me, you have to drive your car on the street. And it, and it was not fun for the other neighbors, as I said, in May, everybody, it felt like Gestapo coming in, and I don't think that was your intention, when you asked for people to have nice, clean neighborhoods, or not have boards on windows. And I imagine there are people that, if they have a broken window, would have to have a board on it right now, because a lot of people are out of work, or they're losing income on the base, 99% of the employees are losing income. So, it took from October until May that neighbors started trusting and talking to each other to even see what was going on. It was very distressful to us, I think it cost the city of Lompoc a horrendous amount of money, and I don't think it was your intention to go after older people, disabled people, about a trash can, or a tag that was perfectly legal on the car, the state said it was, and the codes were ambiguous, and the code also said, my car was operative, sitting in a driveway, not on dirt and grass, and yet they kept insisting I was wrong. So when you send someone a violation, it doesn't mean somebody did something wrong, it was subjective. It, it doesn't, it's just like, that's what's wrong with this program, let me just say it that way, it was unnecessary, I had gotten out of the hospital, my daughter had been in the hospital, we were under a great deal of stress, and the officers didn't care, they just wanted to question us about what we were, what our illnesses were, and all, and, but I just don't understand the cost. And I added up, and estimated, it costs $3,000 to $4,000 for the city, for his law firm, charged against the city, plus the fees it costs for the clerks here, that, for what? $25, $100? Is that really what you want, to go after, and we live in a nice neighborhood? I just don't think that's right, and I hope you rethink it, or, or talk to people, when you sit there and say you're not the best friend of people, there's a reason for that. It doesn't matter how polite someone is, if they're just harassed, 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 and you're not understanding, and no, I, I remember, I mentioned the cardboard box to you, and you said, well, you should have thrown it away, I couldn't, it needed to be cut up, I'd just gotten out of the hospital, I had gently set it outside for my husband to cut it up, it would have been difficult for me to take it, where you wanted, where he was suggesting I take it. You have to give people a little bit of a break, and by the way, we've had two basketball hoops parked on the streets for, since Christmas and longer, you guys haven't fined them, you've never put them in an administrative hearing.
Okay, you're gonna have to finish-
Yeah, I know, I'm done, but if you want to talk about harassments, or unsightfulness, and danger, and people are hitting that, I was told, that's the police department's problem, not code enforcement, so I'm not seeing the line. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, come back to the consent calendar. This evening, we have the approval minutes of the council regular meeting of July 2nd, 2013. Approval expenditures, a payroll voucher of $1,143,000, an expense voucher of $412,000, expense voucher of $210,000, expense voucher of $146,000, expense voucher of $243,000, and electronic payments of $1,827. I confess, I did not get a chance to read, go through those, if there is a check in there made payable to Smitty's Towing or Lompoc Lock and Safe, I abstain. And number three, an increase in the city of Lompoc's support of the Lompoc Public Library to provide resources to modify the library compensation plans, which were discussed at a prior council meeting. Number four, approval of the Lompoc Police Officers Association settlement agreement, and the associated appropriations case number LACO 100M, LACE 555M, LACE 564M, and LACE 585M. A ground lease agreement for Renee Minares, DBA Barnstormers Aero Service, Inc., bringing a pilot training facility to the Lompoc Airport. A lease amendment number one for the Rivers Edge Pet Lodge. And item number seven, amendment of the city council handbook to cover the requests, we, oop, sorry, too far, well, I was trying to get faster. Okay, so we have items one through six, is there any item on here that a council member would like to pull? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion for approval. I'll move approval. And a second? Down everybody at once.
I'll second it.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. And now, the council requests, amendments to the city council handbook that were requested by the council at our workshop back in January, or December, I forget which, and we don't have any public comment on this, I think we should. Anybody want to talk to us about this subject? Nope, nobody wants to talk about that. Hmm, sir?
No, I, I assumed you wanted me to give you a little presentation, since it was a council request. If not, I'll be with me.
Yeah, does anybody, I don't know, these are pretty mundane things, does anybody want Joe to regurgitate them?
Briefly, please.
One minute.
You're right, back in December of 2012, as part of your workshop, you asked for some changes to the handbook, the council handbook, the changes were to make sure that the, a, a commissioner's giving you a recommendation, both the commission chair and the liaison could come before you, so we've modified the handbook to make that clear. In addition, you wanted to make sure that the Economic Development Commission was added to the list of boards and bodies, and so we've done that. In addition to that, we wanted to make a couple of minor changes that made it clear that this covered more than just commissions, it covers committees, boards, and, and, as well, and we also changed the face page, because we have new council people that we need to change. So there was nothing really important that I needed to have legal advice on, but I was, I'm providing you with the changes you wanted to see.
Okay. So, any questions? A motion?
I'll move that we accept, approve the proposed amendment to council handbook by adopting resolution 586913.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Just so everybody in the audience knows, this is really trivial stuff, we're just, it's housecleaning. Could we vote, please? That passes 5-0. And we should have all gotten together in, in advance, and conspired all vote, and no one, make Joe wonder what's going on. That'd, that'd be an illegal meeting, though.
Yeah, we'd be wondering.
And now, the main event. Our new business, the purchase of a 24 cubic yard scraper, for the landfill, for the nominal price of $855,704, and here's Brad to talk us into it.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. One of the reasons this is on the agenda as a action item is that it's, exceeds the council limit of what could be on the consent agenda, but for that, this is, for the most part, an ordinary purchase. It was included in the 1315 budget. The vehicle itself is eight years past its original replacement life, and it was included, the purchase of it was included in the financing package that was done, that was approved by the council three or four meetings ago. By coincidence, the amount was higher, the, the purchase amount was higher than was budgeted back in 2005, because of eight years of cost of the increases, but we were able to get the financing package adjusted to pay, to provide the financing for the whole entire amount. The solid waste division will be paying for its share of the fleet cost, based on this, over the life of the vehicle, so there's really not any additional cost that we're going to be seeing in this fiscal cycle, and in the future cycles over the next 15 years, it will be included in the, the cost calculation for allocation of fleet. The purchase was under a nat, nationwide competitive bid that was done by the city of Tucson, city, yeah, city of Tucson, that is available for us to piggyback on, and that's exactly what we did, which is meets our municipal code for that type of purchase, so we didn't have to go through the whole entire process of specing out and getting bids ourselves, we just utilized somebody else's. One of the things that came up from an operational point of view is that this scraper, which is basically a big earth mover, is going to be used in their winterization process that they need to get done by October 1st, so they're going to be able to get this on order, if you approve it, but they also will get a rental that will go towards the purchase price, so they can get that work done by October 1st, which is a state mandated timeframe by the state water quality board. So, I'll leave it at that, if there's any questions about any of the particulars, if you have a question about the scraper itself, I may not be able to answer that, but it went through the rigor review process, through fleet, through solid waste, and through purchasing. So, I'll ask for a recommendation to approve the purchase.
Well, before I recognize the council members, I just want to say that, you know, we're happily, because we were able to purchase under this national agreement, the delivering contractor will be over the hill in Santa Maria, so we're helping our friends in Santa Maria in keeping the dollars- So we're helping our friends in Santa Maria in keeping the dollars in this half of the world rather than buying it from somewhere far away. You guys have to flip for it because you're simultaneous.
I'm right.
I see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wilkie, I know you briefly covered it and it's in the report here, but I didn't catch it and I had to come to talk to you about it. So maybe just for a little extra clarification for the public, it was, even though normally we see competitive bids on here where we get three bids, four bids, and we select the lowest one. That wasn't here. But again, you did explain that it still was a competitive bid. I want you to explain a little bit more about that. And then also explain how if we had gone out to get our own competitive bids, our competitive bid would have been, would most likely have been even higher than this one because it was on a larger scale. Is that correct?
And that's exactly right. You basically answered your own question. It was a competitive bid done through the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance. So it, in all matters, it was a competitive bid that was done on our behalf. We're part of that alliance so we can utilize their bidding process. We will get the bid packages that they utilize, so we have that in our files, but we don't necessarily have to go out and duplicate that. And the duplication of that likely would be quite a long and drawn-out process, and we benefit from them having done all that already. And by being nationwide, it has a cumulative effect. It's probably hundreds of vehicles that are being purchased under this arrangement throughout the country. So instead of buying one, we're part of a bid package that's buying hundreds or maybe even thousands.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, we got the quantity lot discount.
Yes.
Councilmember Starbuck?
That the government gets, right? My, my big question is, I understand all this. What happens to the old one now? We know that it's broke. It's been scrapped for all practical purposes. We're not going to dump 20,000 into a transmission. What happens to it? Where's the accountability go on the old piece now? There's probably several thousand dollars' worth of iron.
If it's not part of a trade-in to Quinn as part of the package, then as one of the municipal code methods of disposing of it is to do a competitive bid for the sale of it, either as scrap or as a intact vehicle. So we have a mechanism for basically doing a competitive bid, asking people for a price for them to buy the vehicle. We do that all the time with scrap metal, other pieces of equipment. And that's just part of, that's one of the things the purchasing department does. It's not really purchasing, but because they're set up to do competitive bids, they are also charged with the process of disposing a property.
So we might want to make this one to follow. What, where does this money channel then? So it goes over to purchasing. They put out a bid that says, we're going to sell a old 24, you know, yard scraper. People give the bids. There's several thousand dollars in metal here. There's something, there's got to be a lot of money available in parting this thing out. What happens to that money? Where's the pedigree go on this?
Well, the city's purchasing code outlines what it, what happens with it. Since purchasing does the work to get the bids out, they collect the first $2,500 for the cost of doing the bidding process. If there's more than that, the remainder goes back to the division whose piece of equipment that was. So in this particular instance, it would go back to fleet. So fleet would receive the, whatever proceeds are from that, less than $2,500, to go back into their reserves to basically start off the replacement amount for the next vehicle cycle.
Why couldn't we just pay the principal on the scraper? Or we could?
Well, the principal, the debt service is not going to be due for another year, but we could set it aside to be paying for that. But the debt service is included in the, the future determination of our fleet charges for every division that uses fleet. But that, that calculation takes into account whatever reserves are on hand in the fleet division that could be.
I don't want to go way off subject on this, but let's just say that all the wire, underground wiring we replaced, what happened to the old wire? That now goes not to fleet, that goes what, back to electrical?
Yes.
Yeah. Goes to its original home.
It goes to who bought it in the first place. So whichever division bought that piece of whatever it is, except for the $2,500 cost, reimbursement to purchasing, it goes back to the originating purchaser.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll open oral communications. Or anybody like to talk to us about this subject besides Claudia? Who wants, who wants a scraper? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Nobody stood up? Okay, back to the council. Are there any other questions at this time for Brad? I have one for Claudia. You're not going to escape. You want to come on down? So just because, I'm not sure everybody on earth knows what a scraper is. This is that bottom loader that goes along and scrapes up dirt and takes it over and then reverses the process and unloads it.
Exactly.
Also known as a, what's another word?
Can, the can, scrapers, the can.
Long ago, laterno? Before, before you were interested. And the principal thing you do with this is move cover material around?
It's for our cover. We use it to move ground wood and green waste. We use it to take dirt out of the Barrow Canyon to mix with the sledge that we get to make cover. We use it to move cover. It's an integral part of our operations. We get about 13,000 tons of water treatment plant sledge every year, and we mix at least on a one-to-one basis. So we have to go up on the Barrow Canyon and get that amount of dirt and mix. And then we use that mixture for our cover. And as, like a lot of you know, that's like an award-winning cover. It's cleaned up the landfill. Our groundwater wells are clean because of it. Then we also have about 6,000 to 7,000 tons of green and wood waste a year that we grind up and then we haul.
Do you get to drive it?
No. They named the dozer Claudia, but I don't know what they're going to name the scraper. Yeah, C2. Oh, I like that. Thank you. And it's kind of my understanding that Quinn did give Anthony a proposal, Anthony Garcia of the fleet, for a trade-in, but I don't know if that, if it's, you know, worth that or not. I'm not exactly sure about all that, but.
Okay. Thank you for your description. I just want every note we're buying. Are there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, I accept a motion. Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
And a second? And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, written communications. Nada. Okay. Oral communications, your last two minutes to talk to us about anything. Anybody? Going once, going twice, closed? Council requests, comments, and meeting reports from the left.
Mr. Mayor, I was curious when the Heal Cities update was scheduled. Is that currently scheduled out into the future or is that something that's unscheduled?
I think it's on the to-do list.
Okay, because I don't see it on the, on the printed sheet that we received as part of our packet. So there's no current timeline on that.
We do not have a date certain.
So I guess my request would be that we get this on the agenda. It doesn't, I don't think it needs to be right away, but I think that some review needs to begin in regards to how the city has done in implementing the Heal Cities campaign and to come back to council with that update. It could be a presentation as long as we can give recommendations, which I think we can do at a presentation, or does it have to be, right, but no action, no formal action can be taken. So I think that, I think that's what we need to do. So I don't know if that needs to be in the next couple of months, if that's something that can happen. I know we have a big transition going on right now, or if that's something we need to save till the very beginning of next year, which seems a little far away for me. But that would be my request. Thank you.
I'll talk with the city administrator and we'll see how we can work that in. Councilmember Homburg?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is I did go to the Air Pushing and Control District Committee last week as an alternate, and it worked out well. Good to see some of the friends I had before. One thing, I'm sorry, the fire chief left. Laurel has been sending us some real good notes about, we have a lot of our firemen out helping other people put out fires. I have our fire trucks out. So that, it's good that we have the ability to send people to help other people. And as long as we keep the fog coming in and we don't catch a fire. And one other thing, I found something this last two weeks, and probably all of you already know about it, but there's a place in town called Hot Wire Foam Factory. Has anybody been out to Hot Wire Foam Factory except for John? Well, I know this gentleman has been here for 22 years, and he makes the wiring that cuts foam and sends it all over the world. And it's quite an operation. It's good to have a chance to meet with him. But a lot of times, we have businesses in town, they don't sell in town, he's not a retailer in town, but he makes it here and is getting ready to expand. And it just, it was very exciting for me to see it because he's just cutting foam and they make all this. And he had some of the foam wiring that he had, did a bunch of the foam work for one of the major movies that one of, they had. So he has all that. So he has, if you ever get a chance, go down and see him. He's on the corner of G and Laurel.
F and Laurel.
F and Laurel, yeah. G is the other one. But anyway, it's interesting that we have companies that do business like that in this town, and a lot of us don't know anything about it because they don't retail in town or per se. But he has 22 employees, I think, and he's wanting to expand and double the size he is now, so, and he likes it.
And if anybody would like to borrow one of his hot wire foam cutters, I'm the proud owner of one, which I haven't put too many miles on. You can do sculpture with them.
Mr. Mayor, one. Go ahead. I talked to Bob a little bit ago, but we did have in our material given to us a nice magazine by Marion Regional Medical Center talking about how great their hotel, I mean their hospital is. It'd be nice if we had one from our local hotel, I mean, hospital. But, you know, we were trying to sell business coming into town, and we don't have anything like this to show them that what we have. And since we're taxpayers, own that hospital, I think it's about time they go out and spend a little money and do something.
Handle that, Bob. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, just a, a real quick. This is kind of a, towards Brad, but I wanted to talk about it in front of the whole council, is with future development, kind of, we know it's going to happen in our AB 1600 funds, and we've talked about this before, Brad, where it's time that we update these before new developments come in. Because what happens is if anything comes in now, they will fall under what our current AB 1600 prices are. It might be the time that we look at changing these and upgrading them and doing something about them so that we're not selling ourselves very, very short when we do start developing.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend several meetings, but there were no, there was no city expense involved in any of them. But I do want to make several comments. One is that, some of you may know, if you've been watching the news, there's been another school shooting today in Atlanta, Georgia. Fortunately, there were no injuries. It was another elementary school, no injuries, and, well, obviously, no one hurt. But that brings up a point. I really want to give big kudos and a thank you. Our city administrator, months ago, after the shooting in Connecticut, Sandy Hook, yes, thank you, I requested that this city put on a presentation, a workshop, something to let the public know that we, as a community, are concerned, we are prepared. And I was told, just hold on, something will happen. Well, something did happen. If you've read the newspaper, if you've watched the news, we had a joint collaboration with the Fire Department, the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department. We did a mock shooting, it's called, it was called an active shooter situation at, I believe it was Vandenberg Middle School.
El Camino.
El Camino, I'm sorry, school. Exercise, you know, training, performance of the, what would happen in a real situation. And then, this past, I believe it was Friday, representatives from the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department went to every city in Lompoc Valley, county schools and the city schools, and put on a presentation for staff. I attended two of the presentations, one at a elementary school, one at the high school. And I was extremely impressed with the information provided to the staff and also the information that I learned and what the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department learned during their exercise. One of the things in watching the news report today for the shooting in Vandenberg, in Atlanta, it showed pictures of the school administrators hustling and getting all the kids to a corner of a cornfield or something. I learned on Friday that that is exactly what we don't want to do. This person that went into the school in Atlanta had an AK-57, AK, what is it?
47.
47. He may have a 57, I don't know. AK-47. And really, according to the new philosophy that was learned at the shootings is that you really want the kids to spread. And now there's concern, well, how do you count for all the children, okay, if they're spreading? And granted, it's a lot easier to count the dead bodies of children if they're all in a cluster, but I don't think we want to do it that way. So new things that have been learned through this exercise, what the teachers have to do, what the administrators have to do, and a lot of it is really putting the importance on the administrators, the school officials. A shooting, it takes place and it's done in a couple of minutes before, usually, before police, fire, anyone else responds. So it's really up to the school officials. And the information that we gave to these officials is absolutely invaluable. So city administrator, I want to thank you for making sure it happened. I want to thank our Police Department, Fire Department, the county for putting it on. I mean, it was just a fantastic exercise. And then I need to do a mea culpa. I hate to bring up the last council meeting with our rate increases, but someone brought it to my attention. I went back and reviewed the tape, and I did say something. I did not mean to say it that way. It came, it came out wrong, but I did say it. So I somehow said that there wasn't a very large participation by, from the community. That's exactly wrong. I definitely misspoke, and I'm sorry for that. It was the largest display of public participation that I've seen in the time I've been on the city council. And I really want to thank the community that showed up, for the people that wrote the letters, for the people that participated in. That's exactly what we want, is public participation. What I said, I didn't mean to say it, but I did say it, and I apologize to the, the public that was here, the public that heard it. I was wrong, and I apologize, and I'm sorry for it. It was a great turnout. Everyone did a great job. So thank you very much, and please participate in the future. We really need your participation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I assumed you just had a senior moment like myself where you said the opposite of what was spoken, when your brain came out of your mouth. Okay, so the last week, I went, been at a number of events. One that was kind of interesting was Colonel Baltz. The general had a get-together with all the local elected officials, which is a good opportunity to speak to a lot of other people and find out what's going on in their areas. Came away with a couple of good ideas. Kevin Walters, our, the new superintendent, the new president of Hancock College, was nice enough to come to the farmer's market the other night and see that and enjoy some cake with us at our proclamation. So we're enjoying him, and he's working diligently to make the Hancock Police and Fire Facility move forward at warp speed. Also, our new school superintendent has been at a couple of meetings I've been at, and I've had a chance to speak with him. Truly an outstanding individual, although we're lucky to have. The main event of last week, which soaked up about five days, was the final approval of the regional transportation plan at the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. It's basically the general plan of SB CAG and has been ongoing for a year and a half, consuming about $1.3 million. And I'm going to summarize the goal of the plan, which is to establish what we're going to do in transportation going out to 2040. And it's pretty simple. Rather than business as usual, the plan intends to move the people to the jobs or the jobs to the people. So in the case of the South Coast, it's to build more residences for people who work down there. In the case of Lompoc, Santa Maria, and Guadalupe, it's to build more jobs so that people do not have to commute to them. There was a lot of concern about this document, that it would somehow impact local land use decisions. And we actually put off for a month a final approval, and the staff at SB CAG went back and did a good job of putting some more disclaimers in. But at the end of the day... But at the end of the day, there were a lot of nervous people about it, myself included. And our concern, even though it said five different times that this doesn't affect land, local land use decisions, was that it would be cited in a court case or it would be used in some way. And so as we came to the end on it, I, I got the board to let me make the motion, and I made three changes in it that satisfied, I think, some concerns. There were two no votes in the end. One was a change that basically said if the underlying state law, which basically says local agencies have land, make the land use decisions, if that state law, don't run away, Brad, I got one for you. If that underlying law was changed, then that, the SB CAG board will amend the regional transportation plan. The other one had to do with some language, a shall, should language, and that one was reversed. I changed the language back to should because it had to do, again, with cities. And then the last one was some language that had to do with where jobs were being created, and only Santa Maria was named. And I added the city of Lompoc to that because the supporting documentation below it showed Lompoc and the job gains that were expected, but the text above it did not. And with those changes, I was able to get all but two people on the board to vote in favor of it. The Guadalupe City Council took a position of opposition, and Peter Adam was just opposed to it on a philosophical basis. So we moved forward. With regard to the AB 1600, Brad, there was one other thing we had to get done before we could do it, and I can't remember the name of it. The other report thing. When we talked about this before, you said, "Yeah, but we need to do this first."
I'll just go back to what was going on in the 98 to 2003 period. The last time we did a development impact fee study that was adopted around November 2003.
Yes.
But the things that preceded it were the initial design study for the wastewater treatment plant, upgrades for the water plant, a 15-year capital.
That's the one.
Update capital improvement plan. That's the one that's, it was from 2000 to 2015. That would probably be the one that we would need to have a lot of work on. And the thing that would probably be really high up on the list of that capital improvement plan would probably be some of the needed improvements for the water transmission system and the wastewater collection system. There's a lot of things that have been done, but there's things that need to be done, too.
A lot of that capital improvement plan, all we have to do is shift the dates. There's a lot of it that's just laid dormant and idle.
Yeah, there has been quite a lot that has been done. I mean, it had the wastewater treatment plan, and it's done, but it had a lot of other things in there. Granted, there are a lot of things that haven't been done yet, and some of that is just the ongoing replacement of pipes. So that, what we can do is make that a lot more specific so we can say, "These are the things that we need to replace." So, but yeah, that, that whole process, I said 98, it probably started more like in 97 or so, so it was a six-year process.
Well, one of the things about my comment, I don't want to just keep jumping in here, is, but we've waived some of our AB 1600 requirements that if we were to get into development right now, could leave us hanging out there, i.e., streets is one.
Yeah, and that one, I believe, is an annual renewal, so we can, at any point in time, take that.
We need to look at all of them. I mean, are we competitive with our meter hookups? Are we competitive? You know, I mean, it's, it's been many, many years.
Yeah, well, one of the things that the study itself recommended and what we've been doing is adjusting all the fees on an annual basis based on a construction cost index. So they're not what they were in 2003. They're based on 2003 plus the construction index since then. So they're, the only thing that would be different is if we decide there's a different thing that needs to be built for a fire facility, for instance, that's not in the current study.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing no lights, we will be. The Lompoc City Council adjourned to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 3rd. No, I think we beat this time once before by a wide margin. Yeah. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.